To the special meeting of the Ojai Arts Commission. Chair Chisholm is indisposed today, so I'll be assuming the leadership role here this evening. Liaison Robin, will you do a roll call for us?
Absolutely. Would you like to go ahead?
Thank you. Commissioner Grau?
Ooh.
Commissioner Steiner?
Here.
Commissioner West?
President.
Commissioner Freeman?
Sure.
Thank you. How about a call for the Pledge of Allegiance from staff? Thank you. Please arise. Flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the public, which stands on a nation under God, indivisible, with every dignity and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comments. I have three here. Is there anything online?
No.
Okay. All right. Mr. Wayne Maynard, please step forward. You have, how much time does he have?
Three minutes.
Three minutes.
There's three minutes here.
Thank you.
Hopefully it won't take that long. My name is Wayne Maynard. I'm a resident of the city of Ojai. And first off, just a little bit frustrated that after canceling a regular scheduled meeting, a special meeting is called and only three days' notice is given to the public. In my opinion, I think special meetings should be called when there's time-sensitive issues that need to be resolved before the next scheduled meeting. Otherwise, it's kind of like city council the other night. It's like, what's going on? Why are these things being, coming up at the last minute on big decisions? That's just a concern I have. Process of government is important to me. That's kind of what I found. The next thing is, I was at the last meeting, and I also reviewed the video. And as kind of a first-time observer of this commission, I got the feeling the chair, and I'm sorry he's not here, because I would have no problem making my comments directly to him, but I felt that the chair was kind of overly controlling. And to commissioners, the chair can only be as powerful as you let him be. The rules of order in conducting public meetings allows any commissioner to challenge a ruling of the chair. So the chair can make any kind of ruling or decision he wants, and a commissioner can make a motion to overturn it if they feel it's like not what the direction they want to go. Looking at the minutes from the last meeting, there were six motions made, and five of them were made by the chair. And it seems to me that when a chair makes a motion or is leading the discussion, it somewhat can limit the discussion and ideas of other commission members, because you may feel like, that's the guy in charge, we've kind of got to go with what he wants. So, you know, the chair should, in my opinion, the chair should let discussion continue, and then he can have the last remarks. But it sometimes can be stifling to other members of a committee if the chair goes first. But I actually went to and wrote down some of these quotes that were concerning. The chair stated during the meeting that he is ultimately the one responsible for everything, and I don't agree with that. Perhaps that's why he feels he's conducting the meetings the way he does, because he feels responsible, but it's the whole commission. You know, everybody, all these commissioners, all you guys were appointed by city council, and your job is to represent, you know, the city in your best interest, and that's what I hope you guys all do. At the last meeting, when the chair was eliminating the committees and appointing new responsibilities to the commissioners, he said, and I quote, because I wrote it down, "Commissioners will not be set free to do what they want. Whatever the area of responsibility would be for a commissioner, I would meet with them. We'd work out a plan on how to move forward." This comes across to me as very controlling by the chair. It also sounds like a lot of commission business is going to be conducted by the chair with a single commissioner and away from public meetings, and that doesn't seem very transparent to me. So, those are my concerns on how you guys conduct business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Maynard. I have Kim Maxwell.
Hi. Lovely to see you all. I am here tonight with a different hat. I am here with the hat of the Ojai Playwrights Conference. I am a co-founder, I am a current board member, and I am the director of its youth workshop, which is now an international youth workshop. And I am here tonight to extend an official invitation to you and to anyone who is watching or listening, to come and participate in our 25th year anniversary this year. I am aware that it dates me. It all initially happened around my kitchen table, and here I am, 25 years later, inviting you guys to come out. It is an internationally renowned new works playwriting conference. The slate of playwrights that are going to be here this year are just extraordinary. I hope you'll all take the time to just go to the website, take a look and see who's there, get some tickets, and come out and join us. The conference itself is going to be held in two different locations. Most of the events are going to be held at Matilaha Auditorium downtown, and then there's a few events that are going to be held up at Besenhill School in the upper Ojai, including the opening night event, which is sort of a cabaret of all of the artists that are going to be here this year. It really is an extraordinary list of playwrights, including Pulitzer Prize winners, Tony nominees, and everything is all new works. We at the Playwrights Conference, our mission is to develop unproduced plays of artistic excellence from diverse writers, both emerging and established, and to nurture new generations of playwrights. And we are in the business of developing new plays for the American theater that speak to the most important issues of our time. And it is a brilliant and challenging year, and I hope you'll all come and hang out and be challenged along with me. I cry through most of them myself. I will bring extra Kleenex just for you. Let's see, the other thing that you should know is, well, here they are, I can actually pass this around, we have nine new plays this year, and two playwrights in residence who are developing brand-new works. On top of that, there is a wonderful internship program featuring local youth that are being mentored by these world-class artists, theatrical artists. And their original work is going to be available on Monday night at Besenhill School, so you can see their wide-open hearts out there for the world to hear what's going on with the next generation of theater artists. On Wednesday night would be the Ojai Playwrights Youth Workshop. And this year, half of our students are from Zimbabwe, the other half are from the United States, and it is going to be an amazing evening of recorded material of those young artists, as well as alumni from former years. And there will be music and plays and lots of fun, and as well as nine brilliant new plays that will go up the weekend after, which will be August 7th to August 14th. And you can go to the website, which is www, I don't have to say that, how old am I that I just said, wow, I hope nobody watches this. So go to ojaiplays.org, and you'll see the whole slate for the year, and it's some beautiful, breathtaking work of everything that we should be talking about right now. So, I hope to see you there. I'll bring you a Kleenex, and I'll see you on the lawn.
Thank you.
Am I supposed to say for questions?
I want to thank both.
And we're not allowed to comment.
Ms. Maxwell and Mr. Maynard, for your comments, both critiquing and invitations, I might suggest invitations could go to our liaison, Godfrey, maybe email to make sure we get them, because I don't know, we took notes here, but thank you for that, and thank you as well.
Commissioner West?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to make a clarification on the first comment, if that's appropriate. Is that appropriate, Louise? Okay, on the comment regarding the special meeting, because I know we get a lot of questions about that. And our regular meeting date, we did not have quorum, so the meeting needed to be canceled. Could not conduct any business that way. And rescheduling another meeting, the Brown Act requires us to call that a special meeting. So it looks, does look strange when you cancel a meeting and there's one rescheduled shortly thereafter, but the direction from the commission was that they really wanted to get a meeting during this month, because there's a lot of important business to take care of. So that's kind of the reasoning behind that. Just wanted to make sure I shared that. Thank you.
When you cancel a meeting, do you put down the reason for the cancellation?
Thank you for that. Consent items are previous minutes. We have a speaker card on this. Do we, you want to do the commission first and then have the speaker speak as a matter? Let's do it that way, unless someone has another idea. So I'll move that the minutes accepted. Maybe we'll second it and have a discussion then.
I'll second.
Okay. Discussion on the minutes.
I'm sorry, who was that second?
The only thing I've found in the, actually, the only thing with the minutes is I didn't see, I know Nigel, the chair, had appointed himself and Commissioner West for Kappa, and I didn't see that in the minutes. And I think there was also a mention of the former Kappa members from the public, I think it was Susan Aiman and Barbara Hirsch. I didn't see that mentioned in the minutes. And after reviewing the guidelines and everything, I came to find out that the commissioners are the ones who are to appoint Kappa, not the chair. I don't know, is that, am I incorrect on that? Yeah, yeah. So that's something I think we should address in the future.
My recollection was that, I didn't remember discussing it here, I thought that happened in an email later from Chair Chisholm.
My recollection was that it was very preliminary. In fact, I thought we were going to be discussing it this evening, or we could defer it, because there's no immediate Kappa need anyway. But I don't recall that it was specifically called out.
What does that stand for, Kappa?
Committee to Approve Public Art.
Yeah.
Question. Let me just, Commissioner Grau, did you have any recollection on that? No? Okay. I'm going to suggest that we'll put that, let's put that in the agenda item for future. When do we get down there?
Well, I mean, I think Valerie's point is well-taken. If I may suggest that we could have some generalized language that says something like, in addition, the commission discussed X, Y, Z, and we'll take it up again, because that was my understanding. Because that way, I think you're right, we want to correctly reflect the discussion, but my recollection is that it was very preliminary in nature. Do you have a suggestion for amending the minutes to include that?
I think we'd have to go back and look at the video to amend that part of the minutes correctly, unless...
We can go back and take a look at the video and make any additions. Our minutes are our action minutes, which are a little harder to write, because there's a lot of important discussion that takes place, and we're focusing more on outcomes. We'll take a look, though, in the minutes.
Right. My recollection is that Chair Chisholm, as our public comment also reflected, had said that that was his prerogative to pick those, and in the past, it's been this and that, because I don't think I even got on, put on the Kappa anyways in the email. So maybe we can, can we, can we just check and make sure that there's reflection, that a comment at least, that there was a discussion about that and concern.
So then we'll defer the minutes, is that correct, until we get those again?
Actually, it's under number D.
Is it D? Maybe we'll just do it right now.
He said eliminating all committees except for public arts committee and Kappa, which I think that's when it was...
Discussion followed to blah, blah. So, does that, so does the discussion followed address it for you, Valerie?
Excuse me?
Under D, second sentence, it says discussion followed.
Right.
Does that, does that take care of your concern about...
No, because the discussion that followed is he appointed himself onto Kappa and Commissioner West onto Kappa.
That was through an email, though. That wasn't that night, was it?
It was that night.
Because he didn't appoint our position.
Microphone.
But, but he did assign himself, and as far as my recollection on that, because I felt that the commissioners are the ones, we do it as a group to decide who should be on Kappa. So...
So I feel like the minutes as written do reflect kind of what happened, whether or not we agree with, you know, the process.
Would it address it for you, Valerie, if at the conclusion of that sentence that begins discussion followed, to say, concludes Kappa, to do comma, including Chair Chisholm and Vice Chair West on the committee? Would that accurately address it for you?
I think we need to address the video, honestly, to just...
But that's a different question. I mean, I understand that you're asking...
Oh, as far, that's what I understand. Yeah, that's what I understand, even though it wasn't done correctly.
Because we could, yeah, we can always go back and revisit it. What you want is the fidelity of the minutes. So if we could do that, so the comma after Kappa?
Can, I'll motion that we make this a correction to, or addendum to the minutes?
Chair Chisholm appointed himself to Kappa and appointed...
That didn't happen during the meeting.
Can I have a public comment, or let me know when you're...
Yeah, we'll get you in here, too, but, yeah, let's do that now, Wayne. Can we take a public comment on this, just get another witness?
Commissioner Freeman brought up the issue that I wanted to bring up under the minutes.
It's the same, this is...
Yes, that issue, is it, and I think it said an hour and 40 minutes, I think, or an hour and 28 minutes. I just recently reviewed the video, and very clearly, he appointed himself and you to Kappa at that meeting, and it didn't show up in the minutes, and that was my concern. So...
Let's put it in the minutes, then. Comma, including, we'll leave it to you, too.
Right. The other thing that was brought up and discussed at that time was that staff was going to research and come back with an answer as to whether Kappa is like a standing committee that reviews all the projects, or if there's a, if it's going to be considered an ad hoc committee, you create separate Kappas for different projects. And I think that that was a question that was raised, and I hope we can get an answer Anyway, I believe, similar to my earlier comments, I think that the commission should vote who their appointees are to that committee is going to be. They give an opportunity for any commissioner that wants to volunteer for that, to, you know, give them an opportunity to do that, and convince the other commissioners, they can get voted on. So, anyway, that was my concern about that. So, thank you.
Thank you. We have two things here, the minutes and...
I have more.
Please.
If I may?
Thank you.
So on B, so now we're on page two of four. Toward the top, action, motion by Chisholm, seconded by Steiner, blah, blah, blah. Go back for repair of the Schumash Rock, that is okay. And the artwork slash signage, it is not, to be clear, and we've addressed this, it is not artwork. It's signage. So I move, or suggest, that we strike artworks and the slash, and that it's a for repair of the Schumash Rock and the signage by the end of et cetera, continuing the sentence.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
That's fine. We don't need a motion for that.
No, I don't think so. Okay.
Did you have anything else? Okay. Did you have any, you didn't have anything on the minutes then, too? So, we seem to have, is there, is there an addendum to the minutes you think would be, would reflect your concerns, your recollection of what occurred?
Yeah, on D, that the chair appointed himself and Commissioner West to Kappa.
So, the end of D, above the Novo, the end of the first paragraph, after Kappa, instead of a period, it'll be comma, including chair appointing himself and vice chair West to Kappa.
Correct.
And that, you feel like would...
Yeah, thank you.
Do you have that, Robin?
We've got it.
Okay.
Okay. We did have, we had an original second. Do we need an addendum?
Do we need a vote on that?
No, we're not, we're just, we're just making some changes in the minutes there. I don't know that we need a motion for this, unless someone's opposed to that.
Don't we have to do a roll call, and we all say yes or no?
And we take your comments seriously, and that's the process by which the Kappa members are chosen, will be a future issue for the commission. Thank you. So we're taking care of our speaker. With the addendums, may I move, is there a motion? I don't think there's a motion right now. Yes, I have a motion, so I amend the motion.
If I may move that with the two amendments to the minutes, I move that we approve the minutes.
I second.
Roll call on that, please.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Freeman?
Aye.
Commissioner Grau?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner?
Yes.
Mission passes.
Thank you. I think Chair Chisholm will be proud of us. We're going to move on to budget. I've taken the...
Climate Park, the next thing for discussion.
Oh, yes, it is, you're right. At the risk of railroading, I'm going to make a motion that the funds for the newer member, we allocated some funds, some set-aside funds for a climate park, public artwork. Since then, that put a hold on $80,000 in the public art fund. Since then, the climate park is more or less, more abundant, and I would like to move that we release the $80,000 just to the, back to the public art fund, so that we can steward that properly.
I second.
Second. Discussion?
I'd like to clarify. In fact, those funds were, were not, and should not have been encumbered, and they were not voted on. The vote was a, quote, "concept of an idea that $80,000 be allocated to this amorphous climate park." The author of that concept of an idea motion, Robin Gerber, argued strongly when the $80,000 appeared in the budget, that in fact, it should not be earmarked, that it was not an allocation, and that it was, to repeat again, a concept of an idea. So while I agree with you that it should be removed from the budget, I just wanted to clarify that it never should have been in there, period.
Yeah. Maybe we have a magic slate here, and we can just clean everything up, and so we can move forward on that. So the motion is as stands and seconded?
Yes.
Any more discussion? Let's have a vote, please.
Commissioner Steiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Passes.
Budget, let's try to knock this out. In the previous meeting, we approved $25,000 for arts grants, so we can move ahead, and we're going to, we're going to address that soon here. The city has strongly encouraged us to not exceed our budget ask compared to 22, 21, 22 here and 22, 23. We've taken a little liberty in, on, in committee to put a little proposed budget that's in front of you right now. Now, what we've done responding to some public comments and just to general principles is to combine our, what previously had been under arts education, and there have been discussions that that would have been scholarships or something for, you know, for general things, our mentorships, which was where we had kind of a job shadowing for artists and young people, and our public relations, which educates the public. So we're going to pull those all together in one line item called education, and you can see that in the exhibit here, to 5,300, down at the bottom of your sheet there, too. And then we combine the three kind of collections things, municipal collections, the museum, city art, and the city gallery, which is right here. I pulled those together with similar funding that we had in the previous year for $1,000 for that. So as it stands right now, we're going to then have arts awards at 500, grants has already been approved at $25,000, public art committee 500, education 5,300, and collections 1,000, and it just happens to come out to exactly $32,300, which was our prior year's budget. I think this will give us a little more flexibility as we go into our strategic planning sessions, which will decide a little more what is the core of what we do and how do we do that. But I think setting up our budget that way will provide the city with something that's comparable to what they've seen in the past, but at the same time, gives us a little flexibility.
Smithy, would you ask the staff if we can put that up so the public can see it? Can we...
Well, it was blank in the packet, and then Nigel said allocate as you, as you wish, and so I fill this, we have a copy, I don't know if we can put it up, but it sounds like we can't.
Handwritten copy that we just filled out, so we could probably take a picture of it and get it up, and it's going to take a second.
But in general, we've already proved the meat of it, which is $25,000, and everything else is approximately what it was last year, but it's just categorized in a little different, a little different sum. Please.
With reviewing the permissible expenditures for the public art fund, section 4-16.204, number seven, promotion of art education. So the funds that we are receiving, the yearly funding for arts education, we can use our existing public art fund for art education. The other thing that is on there is there were new committees made. One is literary arts, and the other is music. And I feel that literary arts and maybe even music may not fall under art education on how we would want to be using funds. So my recommendation would be to, since art education funding can come out of the public art fund, including the public art committee, where you have $500 designated, that also could come out of the public art fund. That would leave $5,500 there, and if you would want it to do the $1,000 for the acquisition, that would leave $4,500 left over. And I would love to see literary arts get at least $1,500, and music get at least $1,500. And the remaining, I was going to put towards, extra towards grants, because after reviewing what happened with the grants last year, there definitely wasn't enough funds to satisfy the grant, the people requesting grants. So if we could possibly add another 2,000 to grants, and 1,500 for literary arts, and 1,500 for music, I think that would be a wise decision.
I understand. I think those are, those are great ideas. I think in our strategic planning, we'll be able to decide what our committee structures and what their responsibilities are, and then what the funding needs to be. And I applaud you in finding a clause, it looks like there may be some alternate ways for us to provide public or any kind of education from the arts fund as well.
If I may?
Yes, you may.
I think your point is well-taken, and I think music and literary arts are enormously important. Arts education... Arts education is a plural, so I do think that is broad and it's all of the arts. It's literary arts, it's musical arts, it's performing arts, it's visual arts, it's fine arts. I think it's all of those arts, as distinct from the public art singular category, which we understand to be public visual art. And as distinct from the city art collection also, also singular. So I think that arts education category is broad and should be used to address your concerns. And I, I, I agree that I think these are some of the meaty issues we need to address at that long kicked down the road strategic planning session that I trust we're going to have shortly.
Another, another thing to point out that in the past, for the mentorship program, it was funded by the Arts Commission, but also mutually funded by Ojai Educational Foundation.
Thank you. I was not aware of that. But I, but I agree. I think that it'll either fall under our education budget or under our arts grants budget, you know, music, theater. I mean, every other, every other avenue of art in the community is also is equally deserving. And I think by us keeping, keeping them in, lumped together, then we don't get hamstrung should there be a project, a particular project that, that we want to do. So I think that's a discussion for our, for the committees and for our strategic planning. Was it Commissioner Grau, do you have a comment on this?
I like the simplicity of keeping it bundled as art education.
Because we don't, we don't, we don't have fine arts here. We don't, we don't have any of the other categories here. And in the future, after our strategic planning, we may have whole divisions dedicated to each of the arts. Dance division, music division, theater division, sculpture division, but.
Yeah, I, I just think we could get, when monies are allocated to a specific, if you don't come up with 1,500 or you need more than 1,500, I think it's better to have it all lumped together and then it can be dissected as needed.
All right. There may be a year we take, we spend it all in one location if there's a big project or something.
In that category, then we could lose it. But I do think we'll be, oh, I'm sorry.
And that's what's happened the past two years, that the mentorship money and the other funds have gone back to the city.
Right.
And I know in the literary arts with the projects that I have in mind, that I will definitely spend 1,500.
And the past two years, of course, are unusual because of COVID and so that's, that's in a way an explanation. And, and let's hope it also explains why we haven't had our strategic plan, but I do think that will address it. I'm, I'm also mindful of the comment Ray Powers made at the last meeting, which is that we are woefully underfunded relative to other entities, to recreation, for example, and to a number of other categories, especially given the importance of the arts in our town. So while $32,000 is what seems to be on the table, I, I just want to go on record to say that while I recognize it's the same as last year and similar to the past two years, in fact, I think it's a shamefully small amount of money for a city of, of this significance in the arts.
Thank you. One of the other, all this is, you're right, you know, you're right. But the other thing we want to try to accomplish here is make it easy on the city. Say this is just our proposed budget. This goes to the city. They're going to say, what'd you do last year? What'd you do last year? And I, if we start adding categories that already dictate what our, our operations plan is, which we don't have yet, it, it opens it to, I think, more, more problems. It's the public's money. Let's try to keep the, keep the categories or reduce the numbers that we have for just getting our funding. Let's get our money. It's the people's money. So, and I'm glad you found that, you know, other source for potentially funding things that we've yet to even discuss. So we get our budget done, we'll get our strategic plan done, then we'll do our fun. Okay? And, and, and who knows what other sources will show up when we start connecting our different arts organizations here in the community, other sources for funding as well. So I thank you for your comments. I was handed the speaker card. Is that on this topic? It's on this topic. Okay. Michael Estwannick?
Just an observation. I think it's very important to say arts instead of art. Unfortunately, we have the Ojai Art Center, which we have no control over, but really it's the Arts Center. So you're up against that.
Yeah. Well taken, well taken. All right, do we, where are we at? We have a motion on this? Right, so.
I, I move that we allocate the remaining funds as outlined and that we pass the budget and.
In the sheet, second?
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Roll call, please. Or discussion, well, we had a discussion.
I think you want to see if there's any more discussion.
Any more discussion?
I think we have a discussion, but I think it'd be good to, to say what the numbers are.
There, there, as I read earlier, I don't, we didn't make any changes.
The public can't see?
It's art.
We can't. We're not able to do that.
Were you going to remove the public art committee fund since that comes out of the public art fund anyway? For 500?
Remove it?
Or you move it somewhere else?
It comes out of where? Well, you're saying it may, it may come out of that, but this is different than the, you know, we're just doing, this is our budget from the city here. And let's, and we wanted a lot more for everything, but we're, we, I think we did a good job whittling it down to exactly 32, 3. And I think we'll have flexibility to use for the public art committee to, you know, have some funding should they be reorganizing it.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
One thing I'd like to add is maybe we can pin down a strategic meeting so that these issues could be resolved and get that on our agenda.
Yeah, that's, that's happening too.
Okay.
There is some progress on that. So no further discussion. May we have a, a vote?
To confirm, the, the motion was the, the budget as listed.
In the sheet that has been passed out. Yes.
Roll. Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Commissioner Steiner?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Freeman?
No.
Thank you. All right, let's have our staff reports. Commissioner Steiner, you have the floor.
Aren't we supposed to be doing grants?
Oh, we did do the grants, huh? Okay, this, I think it's an easy one here. And we did approve, or previously, the, the funding for the grants. And we've had discussion with the staff and determined that it was, it was not feasible this year in the interest of moving forward and getting the people's money back out in the community. We're going to stay with the same application process that we've used in the, in the past. And we're going to kick this off on Monday, I think. And we're going to ask the staff to distribute the, their, their, their normal method of soliciting grant requests on Monday. And this requires a motion?
I think it does.
Why not? I move that we allow, we ask the staff to commence the, the process of, of, of receiving the public's grant requests on Monday, along the lines of the budget that we have previously approved. And and, and we'll, in the same time, we'll ask them to look at next year's processes if we can streamline it with potential new use of our technology and our new website and that sort of thing. So give you guys something to work at too.
I have a question.
A second? I'll just see if there's a second first and then we'll.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
It's my understanding that we're supposed to be approving the grant timeline, which is the full timeline. And in your motion, you just mentioned the first part, which is for the city to begin receiving things. I, I think a, a motion to approve the grant timeline would be.
The timeline say it starts Monday?
It's attachment D.
I move to amend my motion to approve the arts grants timeline, attachment B.
B. Attachment D.
D as in dog.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Valerie. Second on that?
I have a, I have a question on, on the, since we're on the, the timeline. It comes, the completed applications are due on September 17th at City Hall at 5 o'clock. Between the 17th and September 30th, who reviews the grants for completeness?
That is something that, that you folks are going to have to decide because in the past, I believe there was a committee that did that. So now, who is the individual responsible for grants on the commission? Is that you, Smithy?
Who got that?
That's Chisholm.
I got it.
Oh, you're, you're doing grants?
You want to do it with me?
I thought Chisholm was doing grants.
I'm on it.
But I guess my question would be, why wouldn't staff, I mean, I mean, if the question is complete, merely completeness rather than assessment, it strikes me that that should be a staff function. I'm, I'm going to say what I said last time, which is that I, I think this commission has suffered from the permeability between commissioner roles and staff roles. And I'd like us to see that we are very clear about who does what. So staff recognizing that you have a hefty workload, it still seems appropriate that you would check each grant for completeness before you send them to the commissioners for review.
Absolutely. No, I think that's, that's a fair request that we can go through and make sure they're complete and what you're getting is something that's ready to review.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think we need that in the motion though, so.
No.
Seconded.
But I, I have another, I have another question. So September 30th, art grant applications distributed to arts commissioners and applications pre-assigned to individual commissioners. Who is pre-assigning the applications to the individual commissioners?
In the past, that's been the arts committee chair. The structure of that has yet to be determined. But the Chair Chisholm will.
That is correct. So the timeline that you're looking at is based on last year's arts grants timeline, but we just adapted a later start date and kind of moved everything else accordingly. So some of those steps are really designed for a committee and, and this group will have to look at, how can we kind of alter those for the individuals or the mini committees?
Last year, each, each commissioner got two, I think, to review and then there were meetings to, to discuss them. We'll see what Nigel does this year. I don't know. We'll prove that timeline though. We have a vote up. No more discussion on this? Thank you, Ally. Can we have a roll call there?
May I ask for a clarification of the motion?
Yes. To accept the timeline as presented in exhibit D, as in dog, for the, for the, for the grants approval, the grants program, and to ask, and to ask, to, to launch this on Monday and to also ask the staff to pursue making this a more streamlined or technologically friendly process next year.
May, may, may I, may I suggest we simply adopt the, the timeline and, and the timeline does include processing the application? And then our strategic plan can address technological changes and streamlining and so on. It might make for a simpler motion.
Okay, can we take the technology out of there? Easier on you guys.
Yes. And to include the application processing. Understood.
Is there one clear on the, and we were, and we were seconded.
We do have a second?
Yes.
Roll call. Commissioner Freeman?
This is for the art, to approve the arts grant timeline, correct?
Yes.
Correct.
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Aye.
Commissioner Steiner? Commissioner Grau?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Staff formally committee update.
We still have to, we still have to approve the grants application. Attachment E. We still have to approve the grants.
Application. Well, that's the one we've used in the past years. We'll just use it again this year.
But we, we still need to approve that.
Let's quickly move it through. Yes.
Okay, using.
I just, I have, I'd like, well, it says, and I found a little wording that was kind of weird. There are three parts to the application form. The grant snapshot is two pages long and must be completed on the formally exact as provided. Applications without the grant snapshot will not be considered. And that seems bizarre. I feel like if the, if your, if the entire application is not complete, it will not be considered. By saying that if the grant snapshot is, you know, I, I feel like the, the entire application needs to be complete for it to be considered. I think that's very strange wording in there. It's on the very first page of arts grant application. And it's the second paragraph. There are three parts to the application form. And the third sentence says, "Applications without the grant's not, snapshot will not be considered." I feel like the entire application needs to be complete for it to be considered.
Okay. Would you make a motion to, that includes your, that language?
Oh, okay. I'd like to make a motion to amend the arts grant application to say that the entire application needs to be complete to be considered.
And would you consider including in your motion to approve the application with those changes?
My, my other little thing I found is that on the essay part, I, with doing grants myself, that it's always, you know, we don't want to get applications that are several huge pages long. I would put, I would refine it a bit, like say that your essay is one page max or two pages max. Or they where that says briefly describe ways in number C or letter C, 300 words or 400 words, just so that we don't get these huge piles of grants, so it's easier for us to go through the grants. And it's also each grantee is, is copying eight page duplicates, so it's saving trees by not having all this paper. And I think that really by having the applicant streamline and focus on, on just giving us the meat, we don't need a lot of fluff. And so that would be my recommendation. Maybe not do it now, but maybe look into it the next time around. But I would, you know, I feel it needs to be.
Good. So we'll take the motion to amend the full application complete language in the first paragraph. And we'll look in the future at, but for the motion's sake, and then to accept this application in the future. I can, I can tell you, I'll second that. I, I can, as discussion, I, I can tell you in the past that it hasn't been a problem, that people have been very terse. And I, but, but that would, that sounds like it would be part of our, when we do this online, you know, probably would say maximum 300 words or something like that. That's a, that would, that would streamline it. So we have a motion and a second?
Discussion?
Yeah, more discussion? Yes.
Great. Yes, I agree that online will streamline it. So I am clear on the motion. So I am clear on the motion. Is it correct that attachment E, page two, second paragraph, second sentence of second paragraph will read, "Applications strike without the grant snapshot and replace it with, 'That are not complete,'" continuing, "will not be considered." Is that correct?
You could do that.
Okay. Just so I'm, just so I'm clear on what we're. And Valerie, I certainly agree with you that this application needs a lot of attention. I know that Nigel said he would be looking at it and, you know, time goes too quickly. So we're stuck with it for this go-round. But I think it's something else we can address in the strategic plan. I do know that last year in the grant cycle, one applicant did something that was even more complete. And there was an attempt to disqualify that applicant even though their application looked better than most because it didn't precisely hue to the directions. So I think we want to have the flexibility to encourage grants and encourage them without punctilious attention to form over substance.
Commissioner Grau, do you have any comments?
No, I know we're going to be streamlining this.
Yes, yeah, it's gonna.
It's going to look better.
This is where we impact the public the most. So we have a motion, a second? Do we have a roll call?
Commissioner Steiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Grau? Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner West?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Commissioner Freeman, for keeping me on agenda. I'm just trying to get to Commissioner Steiner's formerly committee update.
Okay, thank you. So the Public Art Committee and the City Collection. There were a few things that were sort of left on the cutting room floor from when the Public Art Committee existed. One is that we need a list of art advisors who may be helping for public art information. Robin, I know that Luis was compiling that in draft. If you could get that to me and then we'll figure out where to go with that.
We did take a look at that list a few months ago when I started calling the advisors and discovering that a lot of them had moved out of the area. We're no longer doing that work.
That, that was my understanding, looking at, giving a cursory look to that preliminary list. So if you could get that to me, I'll see.
We'll give you the cleaned up list.
Okay, great. The other item that sort of remained was we need to address the jury selection process under the mural ordinance. It was used in one case. My view is that it was used incorrectly. It should have been a selection by the committee, by the commission as a whole, rather than the committee. So I would like us to put on the agenda for next session a discussion of the mural ordinance and the jury selection process for the mural ordinance. We don't want to be cut up, caught up short. If there is a mural application, we want to understand what we are doing. So I'd like that on the agenda. The other issue is the City Collection itself. I would like to discuss next meeting the possibility of having an appraisal so we know what the heck we have here. And whether there is a way to, to get that appraisal done efficiently and without too much cost. And those are my only matters. I'm pleased that there's now 80 more thousand inarguably unencumbered dollars in the Public Art Fund. I know there's 50 some odd in escrow for the El Roblar project. I would like us to take a look at those numbers to understand how we reached 50 because my rudimentary math tells me that that would have us in the, that would have them in the range of $4 million. 2% for the first million and 1% thereafter. And it strikes me that a project of that magnitude couldn't possibly come in at 4,000, but perhaps it is. So if we could all look at those numbers, that would be, that would be helpful. And that's all I have. That was a lot.
I was also concerned about the math on that and I did the math on it and it's correct.
I'm going to give my plan.
Wait, wait. No, no. Well, certainly the math is correct, that 50,000 would equal 4 million. I wasn't questioning that. What I was questioning was how you could do a project of that magnitude for merely 4 million. That was my only question. So, so that then prompts a, a review of the numbers that I'm curious to see. That's all. Yeah.
I think we're going to hear that.
We're correct on our, on our math.
We're going to hear that later. Okay. My quick report is just that I've started talking to strategic planning people and I thank the commission for the names that they've given me as well. Probably what it's going to consist of is a interview process with each of us before we have a probably onsite here in consideration of budget for this thing rather than another place for a two-day, maybe two-half day strategic planning session. And then from that will be, will come. I'll present more on that. So I'm just letting you know I'm working on that. The other thing we're working on is City Collection. I met with Commissioner Steiner and we, we looked at the beautiful City Collection that we have here in the, in the City Hall. And we'll be doing a video for Channel 10 to help the public understand that not only do we have some beautiful art and some notable artists represented in our City Collection, but that it's also open to the public and they're welcome through some process to just come stormy in anytime they want. Thank you. So you can watch for that in the next month. We're working on that as well. Commissioner Freeman, you don't have to just say literary arts. What do you, what do you have for us?
Well, I don't know if you've opened up the Ojai magazine. There's a two-page spread that I was worked on last year. And it's an assignment from the Ojai magazine. And it's the downtown Ojai art tour. And the idea with Ojai magazine is for the Arts Commission to provide, because we have several public art tours, to separate each art tour for me to do a two-page spread. So basically, there's so many works, I just highlighted a piece from the different areas and then talked a little bit more about it. But the information is coming from our brochure that we had, which is very, very wordy. And so a lot of what I had to do was just really streamline and because we really want it to be visually, have an impact with the, with the photos. So, you know, does the Arts Commission want to continue with? I mean, we're not paying this to go in the magazine. And whenever the magazine has enough space, they'll, they'll put one of the tours in. So I contacted Robin to see if it's a conflict of interest for me to continue doing it because I'm hired by the magazine and, and I believe it's not a conflict of interest. So if you'd like me to pursue that with other, the other tours, I'd be happy to, to do that. With doing literary arts, I love challenges, so this is great. So one of the ideas that I have, something that we could start right away and is haikus. And the idea is to pick out a piece of public art, one piece of public art, and have the whole community do it a competition. It's like $25 for the winner. Or we could even have someone in the, a store or restaurant or whatever, do a gift certificate. But have the public visit the, the piece or just see it online or whatever and submit haiku. And we have a competition. And we could do it through social media. And just so, what it will do is it's for all ages. So if you're three years old or you're 90 years old or whatever, and, you know, and it could be an extra 25 bucks in your pocket. And then maybe we could even go and visit the public art and have the person, if they can, be there and read it. And maybe even have a collection of the whole, of all the haikus that were submitted. So that's one idea that I have that I feel that could be started right away, just to get some momentum going. The, another idea I have is artful authors. And that would be a series of authors that are, they could be artists. They can have books that contain art and have a speaking series, a Q and A, presentation, book signing, and collaborate somewhere in the public with that. Another idea is the Shakespeare shakeup celebration. Shakespeare born April 23rd, died April 23rd. So I would like to see April 23rd for Shakespeare, whatever day of the week that is. Pick out one of his comedies. Most of his comedies are five acts. And to have five different castes, one for each act. It could be a family. It could be a group of kids, whoever. And they can improv the Shakespeare lyrics into the time zone that they're in. So if they're in the 25th century or if they're caveman or if they're in the Bronx in 1965, they, and so each act will be a different time zone. And just, and it will be a lot of fun. And I feel like the, the character's name could stay the same. We could say, okay, this, this character wears blue. So the next act that comes in, they can do blue, but it could be any shade of blue. It could be navy blue or light blue. So kind of like gets the, the audience going and have that available for all ages and not just professional actors, but for everybody. Just have it be fun. So that's, there's other things I'd like to do. Another one is a songwriter's standoff. So I was thinking of lyrics, you know, literary arts and to have, invite two or three original songwriters up that are in the same kind of genre and have them be on stage together. And this one does one of their songs or two of their songs, the other one does that. And they just go around and rotate their original songs. So those are just a few of the ideas that I have. But I really don't know how to do ad hoc committees and all that kind of stuff. So I will need guidance on that.
Beautiful, beautiful. Just a couple of quick comments from me. This is really cool. We have, we've done two, during COVID, we did two walking tours on videos and they're YouTube videos. If maybe you can plug those in there. Because we did downtown and we did East City Tour, actual walking videos for people who maybe are not able to, to move as well or COVID concerns or whatever it is too.
I watched the video. Great job. I feel that it needs some editing. That when there's a work of art, it needs to have subtitles of the artist's name, the title of the piece, and what it's made out of, even the year that it's built. Because the, not everybody that watches video can hear. And so it's really important to, to credit the art and also credit the artist and that it's all copyrighted and everything at the end of the video too. So I, my suggestion would be to go back into those and, and I'd be happy to help you find too. That, you could even do like a split screen where you have a picture of the artist on one side of the screen and the information there while you're talking about moving around the work of art on the other side.
Beautiful. Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Grau, anything you want to tell us about?
Well, first of all, I want to applaud Valerie for thinking communally and thinking big. I think it's great. I too, I've been put in charge of arts education and came with a concept that's still in flux about how to connect the students and pretty much all the artists in town, how, all the visual artists. And it has a literary component and a music component as well. But it's still in the works and I will work it out with you all more in strategic planning.
Beautiful. Okay, Commissioner Steiner?
If I may, Valerie asked a question and that was whether she should continue with these tours. I, I think it would be great. And thank you, by the way, for condensing them. I think that makes them far more helpful, far more user-friendly. And, and I wonder, I mean, you're, you're the author. I wonder if you can put them elsewhere as well, if your magazines will allow you to do so so they can be broadly accessed by the public.
I would have to speak with Ojai magazine because they hire me just to do.
Ask permission because that would be great. And, and of course you got permissions for all the images or.
Well, I work closely with the Arts Commission and they provided me, provided the images and used the brochure. Yeah, we had all that pre-arranged and approved ahead of time.
And, and I appreciated your comment about copyright and especially in, in the video because that's so very important to credit artists and also to acknowledge copyright.
Beautiful. I have a feeling it's time for future agenda items. I've already will, I know you, you mentioned the mural ordinance and an appraiser. I'm sort of speaking for you. Chair Chisholm asked me to mention that he was planning to have guest speakers to try to throw some fertilizer on these meetings each week from our arts community as part of his program. What other, what other items would you like to get there for next month? I'll open that to the whole commission.
I appreciate that you spoke for me, but I, my list wasn't complete. If I may, I have just one more item, but no, thank you because that, that is important. The mural ordinance, jury selection process and an appraisal. But the other matter I'd like to see on the agenda is our process. And I, and I say that in terms of the constant or the consistent roll call. We're, we're not obligated on, either under Rosenberg's Rules of Order or under our Rules of Order to have a roll call every time. And it's now 7:10 and we've taken a number of roll calls, most of which could have been done by a yea-nay process. So I would like to recommend that for most of these matters, we simply proceed with yea-nay and, and without roll call. And, and so, sorry, I didn't mean to say what I thought. What I'm suggesting is that we place it on the agenda for discussion at the next meeting.
Yes. I want to add the strategic planning as a, probably something we'll have a motion on next time. Yes.
And I don't know if it's something for the agenda or for me, just to me with the city or, but how to do the ad hoc and how to get these ideas that I have, how to get them in motion.
Yeah, yeah. I'm going to leave that to Chair Chisholm with his processes until we have our strategic planning done, so.
Can we come up with a timeline for our strategic planning meeting? Is that something that could be discussed?
That, I, I do. Right, I'm going to, I'm going to bring a proposal for everybody to review. I had hoped to have it this meeting, but I didn't. But I will. I think it's, I think so many questions, especially with new members, where are the answers, I mean, I'm two years here, I'm an old timer and the answers I give are like, well, this is the way we used to do it, you know? But that, that, that's, you know, we, that doesn't mean anything. We're going to live in the present moment and plan for the future. Yes, Valerie?
This is a little off topic and I think staff may bring it up. But with Ojai Days coming up, I was wondering, does the Arts Commission have a booth in the park?
No. We sure should. We sure should.
Yeah, to be handing out the brochures.
Sounds like an education thing or a public relations thing, right?
Weston, you're manned for that?
Great idea. Let's, yeah, make sure you communicate that to your public relations committee. Let's, yeah, make sure you communicate that to your public relations committee, which we don't have. I know it's very important to Chair Chisholm as well, that we, and, and both of our new members brought in during their selection process, how important it was for us to connect with the other arts organizations in the town, because it's, you know, that's who we're really working for. And we need to make sure that we, we celebrate their work and not, you know, just, you know, blow our horn as government officials, you know? So, beautiful. All right, I am going to move on to liaison Godfrey.
So, for our public arts project update, there are no changes in that, but I did have a clarification based on the.
Give me the mic, yeah.
Yeah, sorry. Based on the earlier request for El Roblar numbers. I did email this to you, Smitty. I will email it to the, the whole group, and I have a hard copy here. If, why don't we pass this around so you can see it for now and know that I'll send that out to you? It does break down every permit, so you can kind of see where that number comes from on page two and three. So otherwise, no changes since last month, so you will see a document that looks just like the one that you looked at before. One thing that's kind of coming down the pipeline is recreation, and you'll see that on the next one, I'm guessing, Louise, is that pretty accurate? Or is it not, not there yet?
Probably not.
Okay. But no, it's coming. So that's the one that we're looking at in the future, and we'll get it on there as soon as it's official. It's not official yet. The other item is the Public Art Fund. Next time you see it, it will look different because we're moving that 80,000 over, but otherwise, no changes in the Public Art Fund this month either. A report on the city arts commission website. So I'll just report on this one each time we meet because there's always something new. And we did sign a contract with Civic Plus. We're going to have our kickoff meeting next week. We're really excited about that. As I mentioned before, the new website is going to bring all of our satellite sites kind of under the city. The user won't know that necessarily, but it's going to be awesome from a use perspective. They'll all be accessed the same way. We'll be able to store things commonly in one place. We won't have five different sites and five different ways of managing them. So very exciting. We'll have a page or pages or a section, we're calling it a sub-site for the Arts Commission. It will kind of look like, will look like a brother or a sister to the city site, but it's not going to be exactly like it. You can have kind of your own identity, and then commissioners, whoever you select to be the website person, we can give them access to come in and do some editing, and the city will manage the basics of the page. So it will be kind of a cooperative effort. If you want to do real special fancy stuff, it would probably be the commissioners coming in, but we will make sure that, that what's, needs to be up there is up there for the public. So we're super excited about that. And, and when we get closer and have something to show you, we will bring it in.
May I make a suggestion? And I might, I request this because it, because the website is hopelessly out of date. My suggestion would be that pending the final, that we take down all of the information that is so old. So for example, I think it's better to have no commissioners and their photos than to have former commissioners who are no longer a part. I think it would be great to keep up the public art stuff to the extent that it's, it's correct, but to take down everything else. A blank page is better than a wrong page.
I, I completely agree. And I do remember Chair Chisholm at the last meeting saying, should we just take down the whole site? So that's, you give us the direction, and we can either just clean it up and take the old stuff off and minimize it, or we can take it down completely. It's going to be probably six months before we have the new site up and running. It's a really big process, so.
Yeah, I'd like to defer that to Chair Chisholm, because if there's no website committee, he is it.
Well, I, I mean, I think we should, I think we should discuss it, and, and whether we discuss it now, or it would make sense, I think, to discuss it with, with our chair present. So let's put that on the agenda, because if it is six months, I, I, I think that's a long time, and, and we should address what our public presence looks like.
I, I completely agree. I, if there's a way to get into the art commissioners' page, I would recommend removing that and just updating it with our names, not necessarily our photos, but just, I, I really don't feel like we need Chair Chisholm. I feel we have a quorum here to make that decision because it's, that, the, it's obsolete. So.
But if, maybe we can just have some representation from the Arts Commission at the, either at this meeting you're having with the, with the new, with the, with the selected contractor or with staff shortly after that to decide what's the best way to go forward.
No, that's a great idea. And with the site, it's always been managed directly by the commission, not by staff. I'm sure there's a way I can get in, and I could figure out how to clean up those pages. So we'll, we'll make it so it's not embarrassing at this point, and then I'll just wait for further direction.
I actually did, I, I was assigned this job two years ago for two months, and, and I actually did go in and, and make a lot of edits, but it was never made live. It would, it never replaced the one that was there. So maybe that will help. It wouldn't have Valerie and Pamela, but, yeah.
So, so am I clear that you are going to go, you're going to find a way in, and you are going to remove the current commissioners, and you are just going to put the five names so that that aspect is accurate? And you're going to clean up other stuff? I don't think we need a motion for that. I think that's what staff should do. Great.
I'm looking at staff because that's traditionally been our job, but, yeah, right.
It has been, but for this, we, we don't want to embarrass ourselves. We will absolutely make it, make it so it will hold us over until we reach that six-month point, and then we'll look at it again.
What else you got? You got somebody to introduce, don't you?
I, I do have a staff comment. Commissioner Steiner, you requested the screens and the budget information up twice. The, that information in the agenda packet is here in person, and you can find it on the calendar version, or the calendar portion of our website under, in the agenda packet. And it was decided by myself and IT during setup, since there was no commissioners virtually attending our presentations to have the screens up. But I believe I can do a much better job in my new role here, handling tech.
Great. And, and speaking of which, would you introduce yourself, both, both for us and, and also for the public?
Yes. My, my name is Weston Montgomery. I will be assisting Robin with the Arts Commission, and I work here in the city manager's office.
Welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
So you have two of us for a while.
Yeah.
And are both learning what we're doing, so. Oh, we did have one more speaker card there?
Thank you. Let me see where we're at here. Public arts project. Staff liaison reports. No one from the council here? Okay. Add bios. Oh, someone asked for the website, the bios, yeah, right. Certainly, certainly. Is that a?
I mentioned this to Robin in an email today. You're missing such an opportunity for public relations with your website. You can't be strangers and be successful. So when you do this, please have bios. What are your credentials? They are amazing. So if you're going to be making decisions and, you know, gifting money to worthy artists of performing fine arts, whatever, you know, it's better to have some credibility, and you all have it. So don't hide it on the website. Thanks.
Thank you.
I have a question. What's happening with Facebook and the Arts Commission? Does the Arts Commission have a Facebook page?
So the, the best practice for cities, and I know we kind of debated from this in the past, but is to have official city Facebook pages, because we have obligations for, we keep all the comments and all of that, and not have pages that are administered by individuals outside of the city. But that said, we would love to integrate Arts Commission, and we've thought about different ways to do it. This might be a, a future item, but maybe having, you know, a, a day a week, a day every two weeks, where we focused on something that, you know, the different commissions were doing. So we can definitely weave you in.
Okay.
So is, there was one, has it been taken down?
There is one. I think it has not been active at all.
We couldn't find the password.
Yeah. And it's, it's a little tricky, because these are public meetings, and there's no way of archiving those comments, and we're not responsible for this.
Sure, sure. Good. I'm going to move on to commissioner comments. Commissioner, who would like, Commissioner Steiner, why don't you start? Show the newbies how you do it.
I would love to.
I would love to. Thank you. So both Valerie, Pam, and I attended the Ojai Studio Artists opening this evening at the museum. Both Valerie and Pam had works in that exhibition. It was absolutely gorgeous. It was very well-attended. So well-attended that I kept my mask on the entire time, but I think it was absolutely terrific. Earlier this month, there was a fundraiser for the Jail Project, which this commission funded in part. And it is OJAI, the Ojai Jail Art Initiative, which will occur the week during Ojai Day. So it will be in October, and it will use the, the historic Ojai jail and have a number of artistic initiatives about and concerning it. Also this month, the city gave a, a lovely recognition award and ceremony to Christine Golden, who had served many years on this commission. And it was absolutely lovely for her to receive that. Now, I knew nothing about it. I don't know whether my other fellow commissioners did, but I'd like to ask that when matters occur, and asking this of staff, that we be informed, because I think it would have been good if we had been there en masse to congratulate our former colleague. While we may not agree at all times on all matters, I, I certainly think that this commission is all about trust and transparency, and we want to honor our former colleagues. So my request to staff is to keep us informed on all matters.
Thank you. Commissioner Freeman?
I just want to say thank you to my fellow commissioners and staff and comments, and I feel we've had a very productive meeting and look forward to the next one.
Thank you. Commissioner Grau?
Wow, that's hard to follow. Thank you, Christine, for mentioning the Ojai Studio Artists reception tonight. I'd also like for people who are watching and listening to Bookmark the second weekend in October, we have 83 artists who are members of the Ojai Studio Artists, and they will have their studios open for three days. This is a huge event in Ojai, and I believe this is the 39th or 40th year. And I'm always surprised by how many people in Ojai do not know about it, and even art commissioners who have not been on that tour. So I hope that this will be publicized and people become aware of it.
Thank you. I'd just like to wish Chair Chisholm the best, and I hope we did, we did a good job for him. Thank you, my, my fellow commissioners for tolerating my leadership. It was thrust upon me. I was preparing for this, and I wasn't able to attend, attend that music, that museum function. But it's very, I think it's very important that we, we try to have representation at, at every arts function that goes on in the city, because it doesn't matter what our bios say, you know, if we're not actually out there representing the people that we're supposed to, representing service to the people that we're supposed to represent in the arts community and the general public. Is there a city council liaison report? I see there's no city council person here, so. With that, clap off.
Well, before, before, before we adjourn, and I'm pleased to move to adjourn, but I would like to thank you for your last moment leadership here. I think you did a great job.
You had your chance, you missed it. You're welcome. This meeting is adjourned.